Activities and actions. She is not well.
We'd like to call this evening this meeting of the Peoria City Council to order. Welcome H. Wayne Wilson and his listening audience at WCBU, as well as Cable Channel 22. Madam Clerk, the council microphones are open for roll call.
Mayor Artis.
Here.
Councilmember Akerson, Councilmember Seer.
Here.
Councilmember Grab.
Here.
Councilmember Jensen, Councilmember Montalongo, Councilmember Moore, Councilmember Euler.
Here.
Councilmember Rigenbach.
Here.
Councilmember Ruckregel, and Councilmember Turner.
Present.
You have a quorum present, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We'd like to invite everyone to join us for a moment of silent prayer or sound reflection, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Looks like we have a couple of proclamations and also a small business award this evening. And we're going to start with the Small Business Award for Callahan Pork Producers. If you'd like to join me, to the front podium. We are proud this evening, as you know, from time to time, we ask businesses in Peoria to come down before council meeting and allow the council an opportunity to recognize them in doing business in Peoria. And it's an honor for us this evening to recognize the Callahan Pork Producers, who are celebrating 80 years in our community. And I have quite a list of things that I'd like to read, but in 80 years, quite a bit happens. So, founded in the summer of 1937 by brothers Russell and Harry Myatt, along with Paul Callahan, and then Lou Landon, a Bradley University graduate and Army veteran, joined his father-in-law in 1953, and was instrumental in leading the company through some unexpected challenges, most noticeably, the tornado of 1965. And for businesspeople that are old enough to remember, double-digit interest rates in the 1970s and 80s could be very problematic for business. While they started local, they expanded in volume and radius. Today, they deliver to sausage makers throughout the United States, and can process over 700 Sows a day. Their product is not only USDA inspected, but garners a BRC-certified Grade A mark, which is a leading global standard in food quality. Incredibly, what took them all day to do 10 years ago, Callahan can now produce in less than three hours. Their longevity, in their words, can be attributed to, quote, "constantly re-engineering, rethinking, and replacing to improve the process," end quote. Callahan credits its local management team, accountants, bankers, construction contractors, lawyers, and union employee base for its ultimate success. Without their dedication and collaboration, its achievements would not be possible. Callahan's primary mission is to create value for their customers, and by doing so, they recognize that their customers are partners and not competition. So if you recently enjoyed a brat over the 4th of July weekend, or if you or a loved one required blood thinners, or had a heart valve replacement, there's a very good probability all of those raw materials originated at the foot of South Street, right here in Peoria. So on behalf of the city of Peoria, the Peoria City Council, we want to thank Mrs. Joan Landon, who is with us today, her son Tom and his wife Lily, and the entire Callahan Pork family for their 80-year investment in our community and the people who live here. And it's, on a somber side, we lost Mr. Landon on April 13th. He left with Mrs. Landon and the family at his side, but he lived to the ripe old age of 87, surely created a great legacy in our community that his family is continuing on. So, on behalf of all of us, thank you very much for your continued investment in our community. I'm going to ask First District Councilwoman, where Callahan resides, Denise Moore, to say a few words, and Councilwoman Moore will make the presentation to the Landon family.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am so excited about a company that has made the commitment to the First District to stay there. And not only did they make a commitment to the First District, they even expanded the operations in 2014. So that shows a real commitment, a real home, and we really appreciate the fact that they've been here for as long as they have, and I hope will stay here until the cows come home, or is it the pigs, or whatever. So, having said that, I don't want to take a lot of time, because really, the people of the hour are standing right here. And with the matriarch of the family here, isn't she lovely? And that song comes to mind, she is gorgeous. But, this is a company that employs folks right in the community, employs some of the underemployed folks, employs people who may be ex-offenders. They are doing what we would like to see others do. They stepped up to the plate and decided this is something that could be done. And it is my hope that they continue to do what they're doing and even grow in the future. More to come on that later. At this time, I'd like to ask Tom to step forward, and with the mayor, we would like to acknowledge Callahan Pork Processors, Inc., for your commitment to the city of Peoria and the First District. Thank you.
Thank you. First of all, thank you, Councilmember Moore and Mayor Artis, thank you so much. As was mentioned, my dad passed away 90 days ago, with my mom right there by his side. Mom, thanks for being here tonight. Your dad, and my grandfather, would be very, very proud of you tonight, and I thank you for being here. Oh, sorry. A little piece of my grandfather, your dad, is here tonight. When I was six years old, he gave me this matchbox car. It's my favorite matchbox car. Also, I'm literally wearing dad's shoes tonight, Mom. So, they're both here tonight. Thank you so much for being here. So, on behalf of everybody at Callahan, everybody in my family, I'd like to thank my wife, Jason Jones, my general manager, and Kate Jones's wife, thank you for Peoria, thank you so much. Thank you so much. You're welcome.
Next up is the First Annual Run Day Fun Day.
Whereas the First Annual Run Day Fun Day will be held on Saturday, August 5th, in downtown Peoria, and whereas, along with Run Day Fun Day, approximately 4,000 St. Jude runners, including participants of the Memphis to Peoria Run, and their 2,000-plus family and friends, will converge at the Peoria Civic Center to celebrate and turn in the funds raised at the St. Jude Telethon. And whereas several family-friendly festivities will take place from 1:00 to 5:00 p.m., including face painting, balloon fun, and sign-making to welcome the runners, and whereas throughout the downtown area, many Peoria bars and restaurants will participate, providing live entertainment, commemorative items to purchase, and free shuttles from noon to 6:00 p.m. Now therefore, I, Jamar Artis, Mayor of the city of Peoria, do hereby recognize the First Annual Run Day Fun Day in Peoria, and encourage everyone to participate. Mark Mistlehorn is going to enlighten us with a few more specifics on this, and as long as we have former sheriff and now Chief McCoy with us, he's going to give us a couple of words about the Memphis Run coming up in a couple of weeks, and encourage you all to help us with that. So, Mark, you're going to be first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm the chairman of the Downtown Advisory Commission, and I'm a runner on the Running Central St. Jude Run. So, combining these two things, encouraging improvement and more activity in our downtown, more business, and more exposure and funds raised for the great things that St. Jude does, we had an idea to take advantage of the thousands of people, as mentioned in the proclamation, 4,000 runners converge on the Civic Center for the telethon. This year, it's on Saturday, August 5th, and thousands of their friends and family are here, but there's never really been a way to sort of capture those people, maybe keep them in town longer, raise more awareness and dollars for St. Jude. So that was the idea with this. And so, we got together a great group, Sherri Simonas has done a great job as our chairperson, the Peoria Riverfront Association, Sharon Graham, the director, Bo Sutherland with the Civic Center, and the Convention and Visitors Bureau, and then, not, it's Chief McCoy, almost said mayor, with the St. Jude Run's office. So all of those planning, it's been underway for several months, and we're looking forward to the inaugural event of it this year. But real quickly, what it generally is, there's going to be a few different activities. One of them is a family-friendly event at the Civic Center, basically in the Sonor Tide area, that's going to have, you know, some fun games, there's going to have face painting balloons, so you can make signs for your runners, there's going to be, that's all free, by the way, and there's going to be, you know, family-friendly, small bites that they can purchase here while they wait. That's going to be a lot of fun. And then, we've enrolled about a dozen or more downtown businesses to be a part of this during the entire day. It ranges from Kelleher's, Obed and Isaacs, 3030, Emac and Bolleos, the Peoria Riverfront Museum, Cat Visitor Center, and Time &amp; Sugar, and many others. We wanted everyone to come downtown, experience during the day these businesses. Each of these, they will have opportunities to donate to St. Jude, many of them have specials where a certain percentage is donated to St. Jude, they'll be selling feet, they'll have donation cans, we have commemorative huggies made. All this is done with donations and volunteer time, and to make it easy for people to get around, we're going to have two free minibus shuttles that'll be circulating from noon to 6:00, the whole day, so people can hop on and hop off around the circuit. It's going to be one of the minibuses from Obed and Isaacs, and the one from the Convention Visitors Bureau, so that's going to be a great thing as well. Everything's going to converge on the Civic Center at 6:00, when the runners come in, and we really want people to come downtown, enjoy the day, lots of different activities, lots of options, and really witness the amazing event of the runners coming back to Peoria, raising money and awareness for St. Jude. Peoria is such a giving and generous community, I know this will be great, I think it's going to be an excellent inaugural year, and we only see this growing. So, I really want to thank the team for their work, look forward to it on the 5th, and we look forward to seeing lots of you. You'll be learning more about it on social media, and through the newspaper, and radio and TV in the near future as well. So look out for Run Day Fun Day.
So we're taking advantage of the fact that we're here to help give Run Day Fun Day a little exposure, and we're lucky to have Chief McCoy with us, who, all of those in the community know, was the co-founder of the original Memphis to Peoria Run. This is the 36th year for the run. Collectively, over those years, the run has raised a little over $49 million for St. Jude. Since then, there's also been a St. Jude Memphis to Peoria Motorcycle Ride that was 10 years old this year. There is a St. Louis or Memphis to Peoria Corvette Drive that was, had the fifth year this year. And so, all those events, 38, this year, 36 years of the Memphis Run, 10 years of the motorcycle ride, five years of the Corvette Ride, there's only one person that has participated in every single one of their events, and that is Mike McCoy, who is the co-founder of the Memphis Run. So, as long as he's here, we'd like to, first of all, acknowledge him, thank him for all he's done for the St. Jude kids in our community, and also allow him to just say a couple of words to the community about the importance to continue this fight for the kids. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor, and the city council for allowing us this opportunity. You know, the Run Day Fun Day is going to be an exciting addition to the 4,000 runners that are going to come into the city on August 5th. We're excited to be able to host the 37 other cities, and for the express purpose of curing kids with childhood cancer. You know, St. Jude Children's Research Hospital in Memphis, and the St. Jude Midwest affiliate in Peoria, Illinois are two of the classic hospitals throughout the nation. You know, St. Jude was just named the number-one pediatric children's hospital in the world, and so, having the affiliate here, we get to treat our kids that are suffering from catastrophic diseases right here in Peoria, with the protocols they have in Memphis. So on behalf of all the runners, and by the way, for those of you who don't know, Mayor Artis is over a 15-year runner on this event also, we thank you for the opportunity, and thank you for the acknowledgement.
Next up is the Great Neighbor Appreciation Week. are here, I'm going to read the proclamation, and then Joe's got a few more bits of information for us. Whereas the neighborhoods play an integral part in maintaining and promoting a high quality of life in the city of Peoria, and whereas the qualities of understanding, compassion, and respect build cohesive families and friendships, and also strengthen our neighborhoods in our community, providing opportunities to share and feel part of a larger family. And whereas in a world where email and texting have become commonplace, nothing can replace the authentic conversations we exchange over a backyard fence or at a neighborhood get-together. And whereas we can only expect to have great neighbors when we are great neighbors ourselves, therefore, we would like to set aside a week to be reminded of what it means to be a great neighbor, and recognize these attributes. Now therefore, I, Jamar Artis, Mayor of the city of Peoria, do hereby proclaim the second week of July to be Great Neighborhood Appreciation Week, and Great Neighbor Appreciation Week in Peoria, Illinois, dated this 11th day of July 2017 A.D. Joe Doolin.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council, for having us tonight, and really supporting all of the community development department's efforts in the neighborhoods. Tonight, we are here to proclaim this week, Great Neighbor Appreciation Week in the city of Peoria. This is our second annual event, the kind of, I want to provide a little background of why- The kind of, I want to provide a little background of why we are doing the event. You know, unfortunately, within the Community Development Department, we focus a lot on regulatory and enforcement action, and really, we don't take the time necessarily always to celebrate the great neighbors that don't make us take enforcement action, don't make us do regulatory because they're following the rules and just doing a great job. So about two and a half years ago, one of the new initiatives that we've done in the department is we came up with these door hangers that our code inspectors and other community development staff go out and put on doors of properties that have a nice yard or they cut their grass, they trim their bushes, they're just a great neighbor to really appreciate them. So one of our code inspectors put this on a door, and we got a voicemail from a resident, and I'm going to read you what the voicemail said, because I think it sums up really what the week is about. "Hello, I got up this morning and was heading out, and I saw a card hanging on my front door, and it was from Ashley Elias, telling me that the City of Peoria appreciates how I maintain my yard, and I just want to say that there are days when you need a compliment, and you're not expecting one from anyone, and I got that from you today. I love my yard, and I do try my best to keep it up, and I just want you to know I appreciate that someone recognized that, and it meant the world to me to get the card on my door this morning. Thank you again, and God bless." And I think that just really sums up that so many people take such great pride in the City of Peoria, and I think a lot of times we lose fact of, it's not just putting a lot of money in landscaping or do a lot of things, it's the simple things of just being a good neighbor. And while we should celebrate great neighbors all year, this is really a week of activities to really celebrate the residents of Peoria. So with that, I'm going to introduce my staff I have up here, who's worked really hard on this this week. Ashley Elias, he's our code enforcement supervisor. Bradley Blizzard, he's an intern with us this summer from Bradley University. Terrence Aqua, who's one of our neighborhood enhancement coordinators. And then we have Raven the Recycler. I don't want to spoil any identities in it, so I won't tell you who's in the outfit. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Terrence, who's going to talk about the week. And then we have a really cool video. It's the second video we've done where some residents just talk about what being a great neighbor in Peoria is. So with that, Terrence?
Good evening, everyone. Once again, the staff and I would like to say thank you for joining us for our second annual Great Neighbor Appreciation Week. Last night, we got rained out, but like most people in Peoria, we're strong, we're going to keep pushing on. So today, we have our proclamation, and tomorrow, that's where we're really going to kick off the fun. We're going to have our Code Encouragement Day. Many members from the staff are going to go around town, just thanking you guys for making this a great place to live. Thursday, we're going to have our Coffee with Code, and that's going to be at Riley's Cupcake Lounge, Cupcake and Coffee Lounge, I'm sorry, and that's going to be at 7:30 to 9:00 a.m. So please come on down, you know, you'll get a chance to really get to know us, really, you know, understand what's going on in the neighborhood, and also get some more clarification about different things. Friday will be our litter cleanup. So what we're doing, we're, you know, trying to encouraging people to basically pick up one piece of litter a day. We're going to be out in the town, you know, picking up litter, and if you guys are more than, you know, up for it, we ask you guys to join us, and you'll see us around town. Saturday is really, really where the fun begins. That's where you're going to be able to see Raven, you know, show off her dance moves, and, you know, you may even battle her, I don't know. So with that, I also wanted to let you guys be aware of some of the things we have coming up. We're going to be having our Yard of the Month coming up, so if you guys are, you know, out there, be on the lookout for that. And then also, our postcard project that we've been doing outside, we're going to be shooting that out to random addresses throughout the city, so please be aware of that. And so before I go, as you can tell, I'm a very shy person, and when we were doing this video, there's other people that, you know, have the same issues that I do, but then there were some other people that definitely conveyed how much they loved this city, and I was so honored to be a part of this video. So before I go, I wanted to give a special thanks to all those people that were a part of the video. Coach Sean Hayes and his amazing baseball team, and the parents that are here today. Thank you guys for participating. The kids are commonplace. Mr. and Mrs. Young of Popcorn Heaven, Andres Garcia, Brandon Sheridan, and Kevin Schumacher, Jacob Williams, Pear Ellington, and Angie Ostowitz, Doug and Eileen Lunig. And then lastly, a very special thanks to Mayor Artis for being a part of the video. So thank you guys again for being here.
So real quick, before I play the video, I kind of want to give a quick plug to a great website that our great staff has created. If you go to appreciatepeoria.com, it's really a website devoted towards celebrating our neighborhoods, celebrating our neighborhood activities. You can see all the program available to the citizens of Peoria. Very easy website to remember, appreciatepeoria.com. So make sure to check that out for kind of the hub of all the information about neighborhood-related items. So with that, we're going to play a great video that Bradley and Terrence worked with George Bean on.
The people that live in this community want it to be good, they want it to be great, they want to help make it better, and that's what I really love about this community is the ability for people to come together to continue to make our city be a great place and make it better.
I think a great neighbor is somebody who takes a lot of pride in the home in which they live in. Taking care of your yard, you know, mowing it on a regular basis, planting flowers, trimming trees. A great neighbor is somebody who cares about those that live around them.
Me and my grandma sometimes go out to the streets and we like pick up trash or anything that people drop.
And me and my brothers, we go out and we lomo people's yard for money.
What makes our neighborhood stands out as a neighborhood is because of the neighbors and the friendship that we have. And we have lots of different diversity of people. So if we just continue to love each other, and that's basically what a neighborhood is about, just loving each other, and with love, everything will come to pass.
If you want to become a better neighbor, go outside and talk to those that are walking down the street. Find out the name of the kid across the street and address him by name. I've got three little kids. I invite our neighbor kids over to play on the swing set, and my kids are learning other folks, other cultures, and we're learning more about each other every day. When someone needs a hand, we're able to give that hand and help each other out.
I try to think to myself, not, what do I want, but I try to take the time to ask people what kind of help they want, because sometimes we think we know what's best for others, and if we try to help them, I don't think you're really helping unless you ask what they need. And when you provide what someone is actually asking for, that's how you build a connection, and that's how you get to know the community. So I think it's really key to first ask the question, because that's how you find the answer.
I appreciate Peoria because I think it's a good place to raise a family. I'm a lifelong resident, lived here, be 60 years, in September. Couldn't think of a better place to be.
And I think we have a lot of repeat customers because they like the nice, friendly atmosphere. I mean, when you come in here, we treat you like family, so therefore, you might be treated just a little any kind of way, because we treat family that way. We pick on you, we talk about you, but, you know, that's all in the family, and...
It's all about being a good neighbor.
Yeah, Peoria is like, it's like a little big city. So you've got the diversity of a big city, you've got the affordability of a smaller town, so you've got the best of both worlds there. You've got just a lot of great people here to get to know.
I like playing baseball here because it's fun, and you can make new friends in baseball, like, and you can hit the ball real hard, and it's fun when you hit the ball and catch.
When I think of a great neighbor, I think of actually my neighborhood here, right outside Bradley's campus, especially on the weekends, you know, when you have a cookout, you're more than welcome to invite the people around you. They'll invite you over to their house, whether it's just hamburgers on a Saturday afternoon or Sunday evening, and that's a neighborhood I'd like to live in down the road as well.
It makes us feel good because, like, when someone's right around our neighborhood, like, it makes them feel like, like, our neighborhood is not, like, dirty or nothing.
I feel good because when people drive through our neighborhood that aren't from around here, they think, wow, this is, what a great neighborhood this is.
A great neighbor is somebody who is not looking to cause somebody else problems, they're looking to ways to figure out how to work around problems. People working together is really what we need more of, and we think that can happen in neighborhoods, because we all have an interest in making our neighborhood a better place.
So with that, on just behalf of city staff, the mayor, and city council members, we just want to thank all the great neighbors that make Peoria a great place to live. So thank you, guys.
Councilman Graeb.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the minutes of the Joint City Council Town Board Meeting held on June 27, 2017. It's printed.
Thank you. Seconded by Councilmember Turner. Are there any corrections or changes to the minutes? Seeing no lights, please cast your ballots. That motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Madam Clerk.
We're at the consent agenda. 17-201 is a communication from the City Manager and the Community Development Director with a request to adopt an ordinance amending Chapter 5 of the Code of the City of Peoria pertaining to registration of lots. 17-202 is a request to adopt an ordinance amending Chapter 32 of the Code of the City of Peoria pertaining to administrative hearing officers. And 17-211 is a request to approve the site application for a Class H temporary outdoor liquor license from the American Cancer Society for an event to be held at 5901 North Prospect on Thursday, September 21, 2017, and that completes your consent agenda.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Any items to be removed from consent this evening? Councilmember Ruckregal?
Yes, 17-201.
201, thank you. Any other items to be removed? I have a motion to approve the remaining items. Councilman Riegenbach, seconded by Councilmember Moore. If there's no further discussion, please cast your ballots. Councilman Turner? Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Item 17-201 is the ordinance amending Chapter 5 of the Code pertaining to registration of lots.
Thank you. Councilmember Ruckregal.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of questions on this. Dirk or Black, if you could. And I guess as I'm looking over this, I'd like a little bit additional information. Do we have an understanding of what similar fines for not filing a registration are in cities around Peoria?
Councilman, I don't know off the top of my head what other communities that have registration requirements, what their fines would be. I'm happy to find that out and bring it back to council.
And with the ordinance that we have in front of us, are there anticipated any sort of policy changes or procedural changes that we would do inside of City Hall or within our city to be able, I guess, to alert people who may need to register prior to the actual enforcement or the fine?
But, Councilman, that was really a question, similar to the question that Councilman Riegenbach asked a couple of weeks ago, and we continue to try and come up with new and inventive ways to make sure that everyone who should register a property knows that they should register a property. We realize that it's not as obvious as, for example, the speed limit, where there's a sign that says, this is how fast you should be going, and there's a reasonable understanding that you should do what the sign says. We don't have signs up all over town that says, that say, if you don't live in a property, you should register it. So we are always looking for other ways to do outreach. One of the changes that we made just in the last two weeks to this particular ordinance to try and mitigate the issue of someone who has never registered before, is that the ordinance now says that if a person has never registered a property before, and we find out that they haven't registered, they have 30 days from the point of notification to register before they receive a late notice. So it's sort of a hold harmless, that if you can honestly say, you know what, I just bought a property in Peoria, I didn't know this existed, then that provides some latitude before a fine is actually issued.
And I appreciate that work that's going on there, and it looks like in 2016, and you note here, that we had 1,400 properties that previously were unregistered that came on, and so that's the blip up in 2016. But I see in 2017, then, we only have really 500 more properties than we do in 2015. So that leaves an unaccounted-for 900 properties, even after they came through and filled in the registration. I guess here's where my concern comes from. With any of our fines and penalties we put onto place, I want to make sure that we are actually kind of following that good neighbor policy that we talked about earlier here, in that we're making sure that notifications are given and our public is aware. I know we have, there is a reason for penalties and fines, to make sure that we collect our registration fees and our various fees, but I also want to make sure that those are not unduly punitive, that there's an equity in those. And so I've got a concern about the $100 late fee. I've had several neighbors call me going, you know, I've got the vacant property next to me, it's a separate tax ID, is that one that has to be? Am I going to have to register that every single year? I'm going to live here for 20 years or 30 years? And I think that there might be an opportunity for us to reach out to even our taxing bodies, the people who prepare our tax bills or the transfer bills, to make sure that people are aware that when they buy a piece of vacant property, so that we're doing some education on the forefront. So as this is, I just have more questions that I would need to see before I could support this, because a $100 fee on a late fee does add up to our consumer. So that's where I am, those are my questions. Thank you very much.
Councilman Riegenbach?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Piggybacking on Councilman Ruckregal there a little bit, as I recall the discussion, previously, we had talked about those people that buy properties late in the year. Was there any consideration? I think we had asked for some dialogue on somebody who buys a property in December, are they still responsible to pay the full year's registration?
Since Mr. Doolin is standing here, I'm going to let him, and since he manages this part of the department's programs, I'm going to let him answer the questions.
What happened in 2016 is we had two really good legal administrative technician staff who worked with our land manager, to essentially, what they did is they worked with the assessor's office to cross-reference those properties that are listed as non-ooneroccupied and not getting the homestead exemption with our list of registered properties, and then we sent them out a notice saying, hey, you guys need to register with us. And we got about 1,500 properties that way, and essentially, what that number shows is those people also owed property years from previous years. And what we decided, to be fair, just because you didn't know that you owed that, you still owed that, because people who were paying that for years and doing it correctly. So that's where this, that's why it's so normal from, not abnormal from previous years. And I think part of the reason that '17 isn't higher yet is because we still have quite a few properties mid-year who have refused to register, so we're still in the process of writing citations for them when they haven't registered. So I'm guessing by the end of '17, that number will be about 9,400 properties. Councilman Riegenbach, to your point, we have changed the ordinance, I think about four months ago, that has those concerns addressed, where if you buy a property, and I don't remember the date off the top of my head, but I think it's the last three months of the year, it's only $75 to register as opposed to $150, so while we didn't completely prorate it by 1/12 per month, we did put that in there, that if you buy it within those last three months of the year, you pay $75 as opposed to $150. In addition, we changed the ordinance to reflect that if you attend the landlord training in February of that year, and you buy a new property in June, you still get the discount for attending the property as well. So those changes have already been adopted in the ordinance and are existing.
Councilman Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Doolin, it indicated in 2016 that revenue collected was $1,002, and so far in 2017, we're at $968,000. Are our revenues collected offsetting the cost of these properties? Are our revenues collected offsetting the cost of these properties for the code enforcement to go through and make sure their properties are registered and all that's involved with that? Are we covering our cost?
I mean, it depends what you would cover, consider in that cost.
But what do you consider in that cost?
Well, I mean, I think if you talk about the staff time involved for registering those properties, the eight code inspectors that we have, our neighborhood programming, I think that those, that one million dollars isn't the entire community development budget. So not precisely covering all of the costs, it would just kind of, Patrick, if you want to bawl that answer.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When we increased the rental registration fee, it did go to additional neighborhood programming. So there was some additional funding that went into the budget from the increase in the rental registration. But it also funded our last resident police officer. So that position came out of the increase in the rental registration. So that was one other element that we built in. There was some additional budgetary resources for the department to do some additional work in addition to the neighborhood programming, but it was really designed as an incremental revenue adjustment in order to try and add some additional services.
What I'm going to be looking at, and I'll speak to it when we get to item seventeen two fourteen, but trying to make sure that if we're bringing the funds in for this specific purpose, this specific announced purpose that we're using those funds for that, and some of it's going to be related to two fourteen when we get there. Thank you.
Councilmember Euler?
Thank you. Heard Mr. Doolin's point about the fact that we have a large number of owners that are still refusing to pay at this point. Has that drastically increased since the fee has been raised compared to previous years?
No, not necessarily. I think that whether we charge a property owner fifty dollars or a hundred and fifty dollars, I think if you're refusing to register or follow ordinance, it's a mentality. So I don't, I don't think we've seen it, we haven't anecdotically heard a lot of people just saying, "Well, I'm not paying this. It's too high." It's, "I wouldn't pay anything. I don't think the city should have a registration requirement." And we've worked really hard with our legal department to kind of explore the different legal mechanisms in place to file judgments against them when they do get fines and hearing officers, process to really go after those people who just absolutely refuse to come in to comply.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion on this? Councilmember Seer?
Mr. Doolin, just from my personal knowledge here, the fee is the same for all properties, vacant lot, a home with nobody living there or somebody living in there, all the same, the hundred and fifty dollars, first time I hear tonight?
The property registration fee is a non-owner occupied registration fee. So essentially if a property is vacant, it has to be a structure. So if it's a vacant structure, no one's living in there, they have to register. Or if it's a rental property, if you attend the landlord training in February, the price is reduced to seventy-five dollars per property. And then also per unit, there's a twenty-dollar fee attached as well. So if it's a four-unit building, it's seventy-five dollars if you attend the landlord training, then an extra additional sixty dollars for the unit fee.
I think it's probably important, too, that it's not new information that part of this revenue stream is going to offset the cost for the resident officer program and some of the other neighborhood activities. I mean, that was something that we discussed during the budget. I personally, it's not just the amount of time that code enforcement spends on monitoring those properties. When you think about how much time our police department spends in monitoring a lot of, not all, but a lot of the non-owner occupied houses in our community, it's considerable cost. And when you take all that into effect, there's not a surplus involved. I know we don't have a motion on the floor. Would someone like to propose a motion on this or further discussion?
Councilman Regenbach?
Move for the approval.
Motion to approve, seconded by Councilwoman Moore as their discussion on the motion. Seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion passes with seven ayes, two nays, voting no. Councilmembers Ruckregal and Turner. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
We're at regular business. Seventeen dash two twelve is a communication from the city manager and director of public works with a request to receive and file a presentation by the Peoria Public Works Department with an update on roadway investment from 2015 to 2017.
Thank you. Mr. Manager, did you want to start this?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This evening we have city engineer Bill Lewis, who is going to give us an update on our road funding initiatives that we've had underway over the last couple of years and what we still have in store for this year. So we will be, I'm going to turn the floor over to Mr. Lewis here in just a minute for him to walk through that with you.
Okay.
Up on top. Yeah, there we go. There we go. Yep.
Welcome, Mr. Lewis.
Thank you, Mayor Artis and council for having us here tonight. Scott Reese, Director Reese, is on vacation this week, so I guess he figured this was a good time to do an update. So you guys got meat for the night. But, you know, it's timely in the fact that we're in the middle of construction season and we're going to be coming up on some budget talks in the future here. So we'd like to give you guys a brief summary of what's been going on in the past two years and where we're going in the future. Before we do that, we'll kind of go back in time a little bit. And a lot of you were around back in 2014 when we contracted out, you had a road inventory done. And the results of that came back with some significant funding that was needed in order for us to maintain the status quo for our current road structure. So that report basically stated that we needed nine point four million dollars of infrastructure improvements to maintain the road to the level of service they were at that time. Seven point seven million dollars were designated for residential streets and one point seven for arterial. Recognizing that and trying to offset those costs, the council then passed a combination of tax increases for the 2016-2017 budget. And that gave us a pool of money for additional five point two million dollars that were to be used for 2016 and 2017. This pie chart shows where that money was allocated in 2016. As you can see up there, a good portion of that was used on Manor Parkway and Harvard Avenue. But the thing to notice about that chart right there is a significant amount of money was used in what we call our pavement preservation programs. So six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars was used for our seal coating, five hundred and forty thousand dollars used for micro-surfacing, and three hundred and fifty thousand for our CRF program. That was a large increase over the years past. So we benefited a great deal from that. This call, or this table here kind of shows what was shown in that pie chart as a budgeted cost versus what was actually spent or projects that were the actual costs were. So a lot of those you can see were under budget, right at budget. The Delmar Court project is about fifty-seven thousand dollars over, and a lot of that is due to subsurface conditions that we encountered during the construction. That was bad news, but the good news is we had the exact opposite conditions on the two projects on Columbine Drive and Stinning Drive. So the subsurface conditions there were very good and allowed us to leave some of that aggregate that was in place, and we could build off the top of that and save us a considerable amount of money. This is the other part of that pie chart. We had to break this down to get it all on there so you guys could see it, but there again, you can kind of see the CRF, the micro-surfacing, and the seal coat projects and the amount of money that we had for that and what was used. This is 2017, and that five point two million dollars there, as you can see on that chart, almost fifty percent of that is used for Harvard Avenue project. Another big chunk, that one point four million there, used for the completion of the Sheridan Road project, which I'm sure you guys will all be excited to know that that's hopefully going to be opened up to traffic here at the end of July. And the downside of that is that all the money that we spent in 2016 on the micro-surfacing and seal coating, those numbers were diminished quite a bit because of that five point two million, the Harvard Avenue and the Sheridan Road took up a good portion of that. So there's the 2017 budget versus actual costs. And Harvard, that's misleading because we're just scratching the surface out there right now about what those costs would be. We just started construction and don't have a lot of progress done on that right now to really have any real benefit for comparison. I'd like to go through a little bit of that pavement preservation because this is sometimes kind of tricky with people. You guys are used to seeing roadway improvements as far as new pavement, new curb and gutter, sidewalk, driveways, all of that stuff. But the pavement preservation is kind of, you know, that's new to people. They don't understand it that well. But basically, all the seal coating is, is you have a distributor truck that spreads oil onto the road, as you can see in that bottom-left picture there, that's what that's doing. And then the right-hand picture there, you'll have rock chips that get spread over top of that. And then the contractor will come through with a rubber tire roller. They'll roll that rock. It beds down into the oil that's already there, creating a surface. Two weeks later, we'll come through, we'll sweep up all the excess or extra rock, and then the roadway is ready to go. The micro-surfacing is a little bit different in the fact that that's a polymer emulsion that is used with the aggregate. It's already mixed in with it. The good news about that is that stuff cures in one or two hours. Therefore, it's ready for pavement or ready for everybody to be on it. The bad news is, is we have to keep people off of that while that's curing. So when we do those roads, those roads will be closed down to traffic when we do it. So there is some inconvenience there with the public, but we'll get them in and out as soon as we can. The CRF is completely different. It's kind of a new technology, I guess, but it's a restorative seal that gets applied as an emulsion. So it's almost like a rejuvenator. It gets spread down on the roads. It's good for using it, like if you have real brittle roadways, this is a good product for that. So the oil will get sprayed down, and then we would put the lime screenings on top of that. And similar to the seal coat that we did earlier, after about two weeks, we'll come back in and sweep all those extra rocks up and get it off the roadway. This slide here kind of just is up there for a couple of reasons. One, I think it's important to know that in amongst our city limits, we have many county roads, some that you wouldn't really believe. The picture on the left there is actually Lake Avenue between Sheridan and Knoxville. The top-right picture is Glen Avenue in that same stress between Sheridan and Knoxville. And then the bottom-right, that's a picture looking back at the intersection of the Willinose Road and Allen Road. So those are all county roads. So we get a lot of calls about fixing those roadways, which we can't. We don't have control over those. The county is aware, obviously. They actually had a referendum on the last election that failed, and had that passed, these roads would have been addressed. But right now, we're dealing with those issues and, you know, we'll move forward. And I know the county is trying to secure funding for those roadways as well. Looking to the future a little bit, you know, the Alter Radnor Road project just started this week. That intersection was shut down on Monday. Contractors out there today breaking the payment. They'll remove that in next week. That project is scheduled to be opened back up around November, late November, around Thanksgiving time. Northmore Road, I've talked with IDOT today. That project just got awarded. We'll set the pre-construction meeting for the end of July, and you'll start to see construction projects out there starting in August. North University Street from Pioneer Parkway to Town Line, we're waiting on our funding for that right now. We do have a design consultant selected, so as soon as we get the funding secured, we'll move forward with our Phase One design. Western Avenue, we've had a couple of public meetings about that from Adams to Lincoln. Design work is moving forward with that right now. MacArthur Bridge, same thing. We're in Phase One design to redo that structure. Glen Avenue is kind of off on the horizon here a little bit, a little bit of a wish list for us, but we'd like to improve from University to Ward Drive. And then Sheridan Road, you know, we've done a lot of work on Sheridan Road up to date, and there is one little small section there from Eleanor to Richmond that will be done in the future. And our design consultant is working on that right now as well. With that, we'll take questions if anybody has any.
Okay, thank you. Questions for Mr. Lewis? Councilmember Euler?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One of the things that stands out to me, while I always applaud efforts to save the public money, is the traffic calming line item here. We only spent sixty-two percent of the budget, and the amount of feedback I get about traffic calming concerns me as to what the makeup of that is and if we've really done what we need to do in that space.
The money that wasn't used last year on that is rolling over to this year, and we do plan on using that for those situations. We get a lot of calls about it as well, and we're doing that on the fly, designing those projects and getting those out the door as soon as we can.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Ruckregal?
Thank you for your report tonight. Could you just educate ourselves and the public a little bit on how you make the decision from micro-surfacing to CRF to how, to the seal coating? And when that decision is made, kind of the longevity of that decision? What should we expect to be the life of that product put down? Because I know one of those products is fairly new. Are they using that in other similar cities, and what are we seeing from there as well?
Yeah, sure. You know, back in 2014, we did that other study. We're doing one right now as well. So the road inventory for this year has been done. We're waiting to get that data back. They've driven all the roads right now. So we did it in 2014. We did it again. We're waiting for that data to come back to us. And what will happen is that roadway or that street will get a ranking, basically. It's a PCI number. And we'll use those numbers to determine which streets get which treatments. And there will be a point in there where some of those roadways fall below the mark for improvements. In essence, basically, you don't want to be throwing money on something that can't be repaired with those type of treatments.
My question is on that, when we're choosing between those pavement preservation, you know, and we get a call from a constituent that says, "Well, they just seal coated it. They really needed to do something more." Can you give us and the public a better understanding of how you make those decisions about which payment process will be used at what point?
Well, it's basically on those conditions of that roadway. You know, some of them will require more, and that will maybe take, you know, you can do some of these treatments in combination. Like you can do the micro-surfacing in combination with the seal coat, and that gives you more of a structural overlay. So if the road was really in poor condition, we would probably look at something like that as opposed to just the seal coating.
Should we expect a three-year, a five-year life? What should be the expectancy of that?
It's going to depend, you know. We just started some of this, I think we started back in 2014 with some of these. We've been out looking at these roadways that we've done with the CRF and all of them, and they're all holding up really well. We expect to get numerous years out of those. And I think it's obviously not an overlay. You know, you're not going to get the wear out of it that you would if you're putting three inches of asphalt down or if you're putting new concrete down. Definitely not going to get that kind of longevity out of it. But it is a way to get something done and improve roadways for five to ten years that we couldn't afford to do it any other way.
Thank you for that. And also to your whole staff and department. I get a couple of calls a week whenever they go through projects, just the public seeing how hard that we're working putting these things down and appreciate the efforts. And I know that nobody likes their roads sort of torn up whenever it's happening, but everybody appreciates the final result. So thank you very much on that.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Councilwoman Moore?
I wanted to add my thanks also, chiming in with Councilman Ruckregal. I will tell you that the folks in the Manor Parkway area are very, very happy. There was one covert little area, you could lose a small child in that, and we got that taken out and replaced, and it's a safer environment. It's a nice place. That's where they have their Night Out Against Crime every year. And although they couldn't do it there this year because of the roadwork, it is very nice now, and they appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions for Mr. Lewis?
Mr. Manager, thanks for, I think it's a very appropriate time to bring this issue forward. We're right in the middle of construction season. A couple of years ago, when we talked about the need to put more funding towards our infrastructure, it was a tough decision. But we went from about four million dollars a year to about nine point two million dollars a year that we're putting back into our roads. So it's a good update. We appreciate that. We have a motion to receive and file. Councilman Ruckregal, seconded by Councilmember Euler. If there's no further discussion, I'm seeing no lights. Please cast your ballots. If there's no further discussion, I'm seeing no lights, please cast your ballots.
The motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
17-213 is a request to amend the Knoxville Junction Special Service Area Regulatory Agreement.
Thank you. Councilmember Regenbach?
Mr. Mayor, this is simply a refinancing that the Junction Ventures is doing, so I move for the approval.
Okay, motion to approve. Seconded, Councilmember Moore. Is there discussion on this item? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
17-214 is a request to adopt an ordinance amending the City of Peoria 2017 amended annual budget, increasing the Community Development Department general fund budget by $275,000 for weed and litter abatement on private property, reducing Public Works Forestry line item in the general fund by $100,000, and reducing the general fund balance by $175,000.
Okay. Councilwoman Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As I indicated earlier, I noted in my mind there's a connection between some of those rental properties that are not registered by choice, and perhaps some of the extra amount of work that Public Works, or excuse me, our Community Development Department has to do with weed and litter. And so I would like to find out, not tonight, but if you could find out for me, of those on the 201 that are unregistered, are there any persistent folks who don't register who also are contributing to 214? And since we do take those individuals to court at some point, I would imagine that's part of the cost, when you were talking about the different costs that are in the revenues collected. I'm sure part of that revenue is used to take folks to court because of not only the weeds and litter that they don't maintain and we have to do, but also because they're not registering. So I'm just wanting to find out if there's a correlation between those who are unregistered and the amount of weeds and litter that's on 214. And in addition, in reading through the communication, we indicated that in 2016, the budgeted amount for code enforcement was $235,000, and we spent $440,000 in 2016. And this year, 2017, somehow that number was less, we only budgeted $210,000. And I would imagine at the end of the year, we're going to be, as a result of this, north of that amount. So I would like to suggest that we, for the budget cycle that's coming up, include a more realistic number. It looks like it's always going to be somewhere around $300,000, three and a quarter, perhaps. If we don't use it, of course, we can always move it around someplace else. But let's put a realistic number in in the first place. And as far as the indication of the code, the residential officer, if we could use more of these funds for more residential officers, I would really promote that. But I know that's not what it's for necessarily, but that residential officer assist in keeping the communities engaged, perhaps getting more compliance from some of the folks who don't register or maintain their property. So I see that as an appropriate cost. Thank you. I move for approval.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion to approve, seconded by Councilmember Regenbach. Further discussion, Councilman Montalongo?
Thank you, Mayor. I have several questions concerning this. And I guess my questions would go to Mr. City Manager, I'm not sure if it goes to Doolin or...
One of us will be able to answer the questions, I'm sure.
Sure. So I'm sure the rest of the council people are kind of concerned with, when we take a look at 2014 and seeing 1,217 work orders, and now seeing in, for year 2017, 2,693 work orders, I'm sure that's something to be alarmed about. And I'm not too sure I understand what the significant increase is, and just want to get some feedback on that.
Sure. It's kind of twofold. When you look at the staffing levels at 2014, I think we were down to six code inspectors. They just generate fewer work orders. I also think that we've really worked hard within the Community Development Department to improve our efficiency and our effectiveness, and really the code enforcement staff has really stepped up and really worked hard to do more work and get more work orders. I think the unfortunate situation that we're in with Peoria with a lot of vacant property, a lot of vacant structures, a lot of illegal dumping, that if we had 10 more code inspectors, that number could possibly be 5,500 work orders for the City of Peoria at this time. But the increase is really attributed to staff really working hard and us identifying technology and changing our process to really get more work done with the staff that we have.
Some more questions I have here to flush this out a little bit. Can you explain the process and how this, from start to finish, from a phone call coming in to complain about a property, all the way to the very end?
So it's a couple of different paths. If it's an occupied structure, the complaint comes into the City of Peoria Community Development Department either through our front desk, the Peoria Cares website, an email to a staff member, a call to a code inspector, we log that to our system. The code enforcement staff gets out to properties, kind of between a 24 and 72-hour window, depending on how busy they are that day, how many are coming in. If it's an occupied structure, we post an abate notice on the house. At that point, the property owner has six days, five days plus a day window, to correct the violation. If it's not corrected, the code inspector does a reinspection and you choose a work order to our contractor. Our contractor then has five to 10 days to complete the work order per the contract, and then the homeowner is billed for that violation plus a $125 administrative fee. If it's a vacant property, the city is required to post notice in the newspaper four times a year informing vacant property owners that the responsibility of maintaining their property proactively is their responsibility. So in that case, the code inspector gets the complaint through the same mechanism. They go out and inspect within 24 to 72 hours. At that point, they issue a work order notice to our contractor who has five to 10 days to get that corrected. One of the things that we've added to the department to try to make people more aware of code violations that are coming, every day, we on at peoriacodeviolations.com, we post a list of all properties we've abated and all properties that have work orders issued. So if a property owner is being proactive and monitoring that list on a daily basis, they can see if a property was issued a work order or had an abate, and therefore beat our contractor there, and then we don't have to do the work and bill them. We've had a lot of really positive feedback from landlords who are checking that proactively. And that's kind of the process for occupied and vacant structures.
So real quick, did you say they can see it at codeviolations.com?
PeoriaCodeViolations.com.
Peoria Code Violations, okay. And that will have a list of all the properties that have been tagged?
Every day, properties that are abated are one sheet, and every property that we've done a work order on is also. So essentially, with work orders, you get 24 hours to beat our contractor out there. And with abates, it just gives you, starts that process so you know in five days. So really, with the abates, landlords have found that really effective because sometimes their tenants aren't communicating to them when they get an abate, and then they would do a work order because their tenant would never tell them. And this allows landlords to check this proactively to make sure that doesn't happen.
Okay, and I'm guessing this is probably where then your job ends at this point here. And as far as the collection portion that happens, goes to finance, goes to legal. So at that point, then, I guess you take over on if somebody hasn't paid us, right? How many of those do we have a year when they don't pay?
I don't have those numbers right now. I can get them for you next time, Jim.
So I mean, I'm getting to the point of trying to understand, as far as costs go, how many of them get resolved? How many go unpaid and we have to write off?
We don't write them off. We've enacted a new collection program where we place liens on people's property that they do own in an effort to collect. And we are investigating other collection procedures to collect those funds.
So at the end of every year, you probably have some that run over from the previous year that people might still be in process? And that's what I'm asking, is what is still in process that is owed to the city? We have to have a dollar amount, I'm sure, that is owed to the city. That's the dollar amount that I'm looking for, and probably is tracked somewhere through, I guess this would go to City Manager, what is that, where is that dollar amount tracked at?
It would be, at that point in time, once we've filed the liens on the property, we're not going to see that revenue coming in until that property is either sold or the property owner actually, you know, pays the lien that's out. And it could be that they're trying to sell the property, and they realize that they have a lien on it, that they have to relinquish before they can transfer the property over. So that's one aspect of it. If it's funds that we have that are current revenues that are sitting in the budget, we'll work with finance to get you a number on that. I don't have that at this point in time that I could share with you in terms of the outstanding dollar amounts that we have.
Sure. I think that's a really important part to understand. And I'd also like to know how many of them, kind of along the same questions that Councilwoman Moore asked about, in my case, repeats? How many of these are repeats that we're doing here? And what is the average cost per each yard property that we see is at $50, $100? How much is that?
The RFP we released for an average cut, so a basic work order includes cutting, trimming, and three bags of litter slash debris. So that's a basic work order. A lot of these, unfortunately, we see go above and beyond that basic price because there's five tires with it or a couch dumped on it, and so that increases it dramatically as well. But we can get you kind of the average cost of a work order.
I'm sorry, how much is that?
It's $68 for the basic, but I can get, that's not the average cost, that's just a basic. So we can bring that back to you of the kind of average cost throughout the year of what each work order costs us.
Okay, so maybe $100, somewhere in there? I mean, that's, so we're asking for $275,000 more dollars to cover from when to when?
We anticipate probably from next week to the end of year to do about another 25 to 2,500 to 3,000 more work orders in the City of Peoria.
And the $275,000, where's that money spent to do? Is this in salaries, or is this in paying for the work orders?
Directly paying to the contractor, the private contractor, to remediate the code violation.
So technically, we would have that money, I mean, what I like about this is we're owed money back. So I'm just trying to figure out, per year, how much money are we getting back? A reasonable question. To figure that out, and what is it actually costing us if we're not getting paid back at the end of the day? Because I knew at one point, years ago, this was money was just, we weren't recouping that money at all. And just trying to figure out how much is still owed to the city for that. So at this point, I guess I'm not ready to, I think there's more information that our council needs to know, and I think it's something that we should defer and would like to ask if we could defer this till we get more information.
I think that's going to be an issue, Councilman. We have a couple of people that haven't asked questions yet, so maybe we can get those, and then we can put a substitute motion on if that be the will of the council. I had Councilmember Euler, and then Ruckregal, and then Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As it relates to the dollars coming in from recovering the cost plus the administrative fee, where in the budget are those dollars going? And how are we netting that out against the costs that we're asking for here in the budget? Because I, obviously, with increased work orders, you're going to have increased income. And so what is the real cash net effect to us when, because you're recovering more than just the cost? But I assume when you balance that against the ones that aren't paid, we're not really asking for $275,000 here, it's something less than that is the real impact of the city budget.
Well, there is, again, if we're filing liens on the properties, there's a longer tail on that before we would recover those dollars. Because those are, we're basically slapping that on the property, and it could be, it could be 10 or 15 years until somebody actually pays that lien, because that lien sits out there until the property is transferred. Or if that property owner decides to clear their title up and clear the liens off of the property. So that's one aspect. If it's funds that, and we're treating it as an account that's coming in, we know that somebody is going to pay it. I just went back and I looked in, in May, the Treasuries Report showed that we collected $18,000 in May on work orders. So there was money that was being paid in from people that were paying their work orders. They were paying it currently. They didn't, we didn't have to go through the collections process. So we'll give you a full accounting of that. I don't have that right now for you that I could do that. But we'll work with finance to show you the amounts that are coming in that we're collecting on an annual basis versus the amount that then is going into the collections process because people aren't paying. There is a significant amount of people that do not pay, and that's one of the challenges that we have with this, is that in many instances, what we're dealing with are people that have, either they've decided to walk away from the property, and then we, as the public body, are left cleaning up the property. Or we are, we're struggling with somebody that just doesn't have the resources, or for whatever reason, just decides that they're going to let us and have everyone absorb the cost of maintaining their property for them.
Since we're now up against having to make a decision on something where the money is basically dried up come next week, what impact does it have to manpower not approving this tonight and the city as a whole if we don't have people out there maintaining these properties? Because I have a definite concern of the predicament that it puts it in since we're now up against a wall with having to make this decision.
Well, I mean, I'll let the department talk about what the impact will be as far as doing work orders.
Councilman, effectively, the impact of not having dollars for work orders wouldn't stop the enforcement process. Our inspectors would still be in the field writing up violations, sending the notices to the property owners that they need to maintain their own property. Where the impact would be is that if the property owner chooses not to maintain their own property, then we would not be able to pay the contractor to go and clean up the garbage, the litter, the tires, the couches, the furniture, the car parts, or cut the grass or the weeds. So we would basically be at the mercy of the property owner doing the right thing and maintaining the property.
Thank you.
Councilmember Ruckregal?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of questions, and I appreciate all the questions and commentary so far. Couple to add to that, I guess. The first would be, and this might go to our legal or to City Manager, Yurk. What mechanisms or what would need to take place to be able to move that from something that is billed at the fine at the tax sale, or the final sale of the property from one entry to the other, to actually being able to collect that, I guess, during the year somehow? Because the taxpayers, who we all represent here, are burdening on their shoulders a large impact of dollars that may never come in for a decade or longer. So is there a mechanism to be able to change that collection source?
I'm going to let Corporation Counsel Liest answer more fully, but I think if I could, not only are we supporting private property owners, but we're also supporting the other taxing bodies with properties that have gone to the tax sale, and now they're county trustee lots, which the county trustee is a trustee that's there through the tax sale process on behalf of all the taxing bodies. But for us to mow those lots, we incur those costs as well. And part of the reason that, this is to answer Councilwoman Moore's question, and then I'll let Don talk about, or Corporation Counsel talk about the... let Don talk about, or Corporation Council talk about the, the issues legally. We lowered this budget a little bit this past year because we moved more money into the, into the trustee lot maintenance and in terms of being able to stay on top of the mowing for those. So we were trying to balance all of this out together and it was a large discussion that we had between Public Works and Community Development about how we were going to balance this out. Because Public Works does all the mowing on city-owned lots and then they're also managing the trustee lots. And then Community Development does all of the work orders on private lots. So if there's, if there's a private property owner that isn't cleaning up their property and, and we go through the abate process, then they handle that there. But I'll, I'll let our Corporation Council talk a little bit about what we can do from a collection standpoint.
Councilmember Ruck Regal, we are currently investigating a variety of alternatives that we can utilize. There are collection procedures that we can utilize in court, citations to discover assets. We can do perhaps all the collection mechanisms available to you or any other debt collector would have, however, that is very labor intensive. Another alternative that the city has is the hiring of a outside firm to do that. And luckily, the, for the city, the statute provides that should a city have to contract outside attorneys to try to recover these debts, any debt that is incurred by the attorneys can be attributed to and paid by the, the original debtor. So there's a variety of alternatives that you have to analyze whether the city tries to do it in-house, there are staffing concerns and of course personnel concerns that arise if we try to do it in-house. So the, I'm currently investigating various alternatives that we can do to pursue that.
I appreciate that and we look forward to getting that information back. I think the taxpayers who are paying this bill and with the thought that we may never collect some of those debts would appreciate some of those dollars being returned to them as well. And then just a question, and I realize that this is for all types of properties, but one of the things that I think we're talking really about here is compliance versus the thought, even though that this is not a revenue driver, being a revenue driver. And let's talk about compliance, because I think that that is really what we're all looking for. Because it would be great on the day that we don't have a work order that we have to issue. And we're going to go from 2,400 up to double of that for this year on work orders. And so let's take a small segment of that. Let's, let's take the rental registration piece, which we've done for a number of years. And we always sort of add the, the backside penalty as the reason why you register your property. Okay? If you don't, then this goes up. If you go to a class, we will lower it. But if you do not register, we will add a fee. Well, I think we have an opportunity here to maybe do this proactively. Because while we have made a great step forward, I think, with the list online to be able to look if we've got work orders or problems, the problem I have with that is if I'm a one-owner of, of a, let's say, a rental unit, I've got to look every single day at my morning cup of coffee over that list to be able to see if I show up there, which puts me automatically at the, the negative because I'm, I'm looking for a violation. If I am a property management company that owns 50 or that manages 50, 60, 100 units, I still have to look at that list every single day and I've got to remember 50, 60, or 100. Now, it seems like with our rental registration piece, and, and I, and I think technology, we may have to invest here to be able to, to help in this regard, but it seems like the purpose of the registration is to be able to shorten the timeframe, to be able to talk to the property owner to get compliance. So the letter is good, takes a couple of days, putting a notice on the door, may get to the tenant, it may not get to the landlord in time, but I, I guess I would put, and, and this is not a question that might come directly out of your department, but I think it comes maybe around this horseshoe, because we're supposed to be the policy guys and maybe we haven't put into place the structure to be able to help that communication piece. I, I think that there's some work that we can do long-term on being able to bridge that gap. And I think that some of the landlords, some of the people that live next to rental properties will also appreciate because compliance is the piece that we're, we're really going for here. With that, I, I would probably love a little bit more information, but on this, I think coming up in the next couple of weeks, I agree with Councilmember Montalongo on that. However, I also look at where we are if we don't pass this today and having to shut down our work orders for a period of time while we solve this problem. And I don't know that our neighborhoods can withstand that at this point. So with that, I, I would move for approval.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor, original motion on the floor. Thank you. Councilwoman Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Doolan, you indicated that there was a letter that's sent out if there, if the code enforcer indicates there's a problem, a letter goes out and six days from that letter date, the property owner has to fix the problem. Did I hear you say six days?
They post the abate on the property. They don't send a letter, they post the abate on the property.
So they posted an abate on the property if it's unoccupied?
No, if it's occupied.
If it's occupied. And that's, when you're trying to, if it's occupied and you're trying to be encouraging compliance, oftentimes if, if you don't know that there's a problem and it's a rental property, let's use the example that Councilwoman Ruck Regal used. You own one property and you don't know that there is a problem and the first time you find out about it, there's this big obnoxious sticker on the window somewhere that says to the whole neighborhood, "You're a deadbeat." And that's not, that really doesn't encourage people to run out and get something done on that property. Now, don't get me wrong, in the areas that I represent, a lot of that is, is needed and necessary, but it doesn't bode well for trying to encourage kumbaya with a property owner who only owns one property and, and didn't know about the problem. I guess where I was going with the six days is that if, I had someone call me recently. He has a property on Southwest Adams and they happened to be out of town for vacation when the letter came. And by the time they came back, the contractor, you, you guys are on it, the contractor had gone out there and cleaned it up and now he, he received the bill. And his complaint was he never even got an opportunity to address the concern before we sent a contractor out there. Now, there's a lot, that is the, that is not the, the rule. That is an exception, because most folks get the, the letter and they still don't do anything about it. And so I wondered if there was any opportunity for a person who can evidence to you that they were out of town, airline tickets or whatever, and come in and receive any grace from your department? So that's my first question.
Um, just, just a real quick thing. We no longer do post the orange abate notices. Sometime last year, we discontinued those because we realized they were also contributing blight to the neighborhood. Now, it's, it's a, it's a blue notice that's left on a door hanger on the property. So, so that, we agree that that was contributing to blight in the neighborhood, especially if you had five or six properties on a block who got a giant orange notice because people weren't taking them off appropriately. And then to speak of your concern about that situation, yes, there's always opportunity to come into our office and talk about the violation, what happened. It's kind of treated on a case-by-case basis. I think if you're out of town, so when we do a work order for grass, the grass has to be 10 inches when we do a work order. So then, you know, after the six days go by and you've had 10 inches of grass, I have a lot of, I have not much sympathy that you went on vacation when your grass was 10 inches and you then waited six days. You know, I think where we do treat everything on a case-by-case basis is kind of dumping. If you're out of town for, for four or five days and somebody dumped on your property and you can show us that it was dumped on your property, you haven't had a history of code violations, you were on vacation, you know, what I, what I usually do is tell them, well, next time, you need to make arrangements so that doesn't happen again. And then just depending on the severity of the violation, sometimes we waive the administrative fee if, if, if that's the case, because the cost of the city is still to eliminate the violation, but we waive that $125. You know, they, they first talk to our supervisor, if they don't like that answer because he's won't waive it, they talk to me. They don't like that answer, then they talk to Ross. So there's multiple people looking at each case to offer a different insight and we talk about it. So there is some, some room for, for those cases. A lot of times we hear that first story and like you said, it's, it's the rarity sometimes that, that, you know, I probably get asked to dismiss work order bills for lots of reasons hundreds of times a week. And after they present their case, 1% to 2% probably pan out to where they can actually are presenting the, the truth and, but really it comes down to the illegal dumping ones where we see that the most.
I appreciate you going through that because I wanted the public to hear, I knew you would, would say that, and so I wanted the public to hear that there is a recourse. There's no, you know, hard-nosed person here that doesn't want to accommodate when it's, when it's necessary. Lastly, I wanted to mention, and I'm, I'm glad Councilwoman Ruck Regal mentioned that, the 14th is actually this coming Friday. And so we're saying by this coming Friday, we will have no money unless we appropriate this tonight. And speaking for, as a councilperson for the district that has a great number of these issues, I would like not to receive for the next couple of weeks, tons and tons of phone calls because we stopped putting out work orders to try to maintain the properties in, in the district. I will tell you, and is a compliment to your department, that folks are, are noticing the difference in the first district. Now, you're not perfect and nobody is, but you have to know that they're noticing the improvement that has occurred in the first district. Thank you.
You all pass that along to the code inspectors.
Thank you. Councilmember Gray.
Well, once again, we have an item that is brought to this body at the last minute, just before the buzzer is to go off. That's not acceptable. There should be time for council discussion and cogitation and we shouldn't be having to act because we have a gun to our head, as Councilman Moore just pointed out. And I'll have much the same result in my district if we have a cessation of funding for these essential functions. Code enforcement has always been one of the most double-edged forces or instruments we have as a city. It can be used for great good and it can be used for great evil. Tonight, before our meeting started, we had, I guess it wasn't Phil Luciano, but we had somebody dancing around, a little character wearing green, I think I know who it was, and some of your staff, Director Black and Director Doolan. And the whole thrust of this was community development, code enforcement, we have a human face. We want to work with people. We do not want code enforcement to be something that we do to the neighborhoods. It is something we want to do with the cooperation of the neighborhoods. Everything, most everything I've seen indicates we're going in the direction of being less robotic, more interactive and more engaging with the citizens in our neighborhoods. Can we use the stick? Should we use the stick? Yes, but only after we exhaust the supply of carrots. For years, as a member of this body, we have had a difficult time figuring out how best to do code enforcement. I've seen it reorganized. I've seen an attempt a number of years ago to put code enforcement under the bailiwick of the Peoria Fire Department. And one of the reasons that came up was, hey, the Peoria Fire Department, if it does nothing else, it's involved and engaged with our community. And maybe they should be the ones doing it. And then there was all the discussion about expense and everything else that you would normally expect. I agree with Councilman Ruck Regal that the military style of, hey, read it in the paper, if you didn't see it, here's what's going to happen. I don't like that. I think that's inconsistent with the direction we've been trying to go. And I ask that we try to do more reaching out, talking to people and discussing with people. And all of you know full well that my patience grows very thin with repeat violators. And everybody around this horseshoe can understand when there are occasional problems, maybe first-time problem with, with a property owner. And Director Doolan, I know from experience that you and your staff have the flexibility and have shown the flexibility and the good judgment to not enforce things in a Barney Fite fashion. We need a little bit of Andy Griffith. But there are times when we have to do what we have to do. And, and Director Black and Director Doolan and all the people who work for your department, I want you to know that I know you have a difficult job. Perhaps I've helped increase some of your work orders and maybe some of the people in my district who have hope now and who see change and who see improvement are now calling in. And perhaps manager, Peoria cares working finally, consistently working. People not giving up on calling 494-C-A-R-E has produced an increase in this number here. So tonight, I wish it weren't brought forward tonight, I am going to support this, but I want to explain to my constituents and to the public why I'm voting to support this tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman. I'm not seeing any lights right now. I think there was a, a number of different questions of information requested back by several council members. And I think that's going to be helpful for us to understand, you know, where it's coming, where it's going. I do also have heard many councilmembers mention the concern that we don't want to wait for those answers to make sure that this program is funded and we're getting those lots cut. I think that's kind of the sentiment I'm seeing here. So the motion on the floor is to approve, but I also would like to make sure the manager and, and staff are able to bring us back with the information requested at the earliest convenience if the motion, if the motion passes. So I'm, I'm seeing no other discussion. The motion on the table is to approve. If there's no further discussion, please cast your ballots. Oh, Councilmember Montalongo.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, certainly this is a really important service for our community and so we get this resolved and I'm, I'm for that, absolutely. I'm just concerned with the growing number that we have and I really think we're rewarding the wrong behavior here. And somehow we need to change that. And I, I listened to some of the words that Councilman Ruck Regal said as well, you know, I think we need to be taking a look at the policy here and, and what can we do to make this work better for us? And that's where we're at. We need more discussion on this. And talked to the city manager, he said they're not going to run out of, they're not going to run out of money here in the next two weeks here, so we would still have time to have discussion about this over the next two weeks. If city manager could make a couple of comments on that.
My point was, to, to Councilman Montalongo was that we, if you defer this for two weeks to get the answers to the, to the revenue side of the, of the equation, we can certainly do that. If they continue to perform work orders and exceed the budget, they'll still be living within the, the total appropriation of the Community Development Department and then if the council then acts in two weeks on it, that gets remedied. So it's, it's not a matter of stopping this at that point in time, it would just mean they would be running over in the budget at this point in time in the year.
The motion on the floor stands. All in favor, please cast your ballots. Or not all in favor, just please cast your ballots. Or not all in favor, just please cast your ballots. That motion passes with eight ayes, one nay, voting no, Councilmember Montalongo. Madam Clerk.
We're at unfinished business seventeen dash two oh six, and A would be to remove this item from the table. This item, for the listening audience, was tabled two weeks ago, and so, please, we need a motion to remove this item from the table, and then I will read B.
Councilman Grab.
Yes, I move to remove this item from the table.
Okay. Seconded by Councilmember Ruck Regal, discussion on the motion. Seeing none.
Sure. I do have some comments to make.
Did you want to make it on the moving from the table or to the item itself?
Both, probably, however you want. Did I have a second to remove it?
Yes.
Okay. Director Black, can you explain what happened when I tabled this last time? And whether it should have been tabled, the propriety of that, and what happened the day after the tabling?
Sure, Councilman. Two weeks ago, when this item came before council, one of the requirements that came from, or one of the recommendations that came from the Liquor Commission is that the license would not be issued until such time as all community development-related items are resolved on the property. That would be zoning items plus building code items. The question two weeks ago was, are all of those items resolved as of that evening? And the answer at that point was basically, no, we're not sure that everything has been completely resolved, and therefore, the item was tabled until we could get some clarification and report back on that. Since that time, I spoke with my inspectors. They have done a full walkthrough of the property, and they've found that the property is, in fact, in compliance.
But, the fact of the matter was, the very night that I moved to table this, our staff knew that they were in compliance. Because the next day, I'm getting a report that they were in compliance. And I made very clear at our last council meeting, I made this clear to the Corporation Council and to you, that I don't want any requests to approve site applications for liquor in my district unless all requirements have been satisfied. And I mentioned at that meeting, the very first meeting as second district councilman, when I was first elected as a district councilman, I denied a liquor license because they had not done everything they were supposed to do that was required. Therefore, I did not want to see it on the council agenda. I trust that I have conveyed this to you. But I have a difficult time with the fact that the applicants here had to wait another couple of weeks because we didn't know that they were in compliance and should have known the night that I moved to table. And that's a problem with communication. And these people, everybody, you know, pretty much on our agenda, a lot of the folks, a lot of these items, these people are in business. And they deserve to be approved when they have done everything they're supposed to do. When they haven't, that's another story. So, it is with pleasure that I move to approve this tonight, and I hope that in the future we will have better communication internally so that we don't have to turn people down who have otherwise satisfied the requirements.
Thank you. Is there further discussion on this? Just for clarification, the first item, we're voting to remove this item from the table. Then there'll be a second motion for Councilman Grab. So, the motion is to take it off the table. Please cast your ballots. That motion passes unanimously. Councilmember Grab on item B.
Chairman Artis, I move to approve the site application for a Class B restaurant, fifty percent food liquor license with the restriction of sale of alcohol for the onsite consumption only at La Favorita. That would be at sixteen twenty-one North Knoxville Avenue with recommendation from the Liquor Commission to approve.
Thank you. That motion is seconded by Councilmember Turner. Is there a discussion on this item? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Yes, and for the record, we have been working with this La Favorita in order to expedite their timeframe on their liquor license, so hopefully, that will assist in that situation. So, if there's no further unfinished business...
Is there any further unfinished business, unfinished business this evening? Seeing none.
We're at new business.
New business come before the council, new business. Councilmember Grab.
Thank you, Mayor Artis. This year, in our Peoria neighborhoods, the use of illegal fireworks was dangerous, pervasive, and a real threat to property and persons. There were numerous indications that this was going to be a very, very tough year. And I alerted our administration that I feared that we were not going to have the resources that were going to be required, that would be required, to ensure safe neighborhoods. I spoke and communicated with everybody on the council to that effect. And specifically, asked our police superintendent for some kind of breakdown on what kind of resource base we had to police the neighborhoods the same time, for example, on the Fourth of July, we were dealing with the hundreds of thousands of people on the riverfront. And I asked very specifically what the plan was to ensure that we didn't have what happened last year, either A, emergency dispatcher saying, "We're not responding to calls about fireworks in the neighborhoods," corollary, we didn't want that to happen again this year, and B, how much in terms of officers do we have to take care of the neighborhoods as we have people illegally using fireworks? And not in the old-fashioned way, but extremely dangerous, pervasive way, alarming people with their property, their pets, in some cases, damaged property, and in some cases, people actually firing illegal fireworks at automobiles. And we all got that information, and things didn't go so well. I don't think there's anybody here on the council I haven't talked to about this, or maybe one or two, one who's not here tonight, although I did talk to her. Mayor, you and I have had extensive discussions about this. I know you have concerns too, and I very much appreciate the fact that the Peoria Police Department, under your direction, Manager Urick, asked to, if it would be appropriate or it would be helpful, and of course, we all said yes, for you to have a presentation for the council tonight on what happened. And I appreciate the briefing that you gave me today, and maybe with that, Mayor, you know, however you want to do this, we could have them, you know, make a presentation so I don't have to continue to make comments. But I did want to put a little bit of a frame on it.
Thanks for framing it up for us, Councilmember Grab. And there was, and you did lead a lot of the discussion beforehand about the, before of the Fourth, about the concerns with this. And so, I know that the chief and the assistant chief are here. They've both had an opportunity to debrief within this, but maybe it would be appropriate before they go would be for the manager to make a couple of comments. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think what we wanted to do this evening for you is just briefly, in a few slides, give you some context of what we've been dealing with on the Fourth of July, what the Police Department was dealing with on the Fourth of July, the complaints that came in, and then look at what we can do, is lessons learned to take forward and what we'll be addressing next year as we move ahead. But I, and I think what we wanted to do too was put this into context. We just, you know, as we started talking about this in response to the events of the Fourth, we're not alone. In our first couple of slides, we'll talk about that, I think, here of some of the issues that many other communities across the country are facing with the issue of, I would call it, individuals using fireworks, not what would be usually your sanctioned events that are usually licensed by the state as they go forward. So, with that, what I'll do is I'll turn the floor over to the chief, but you know, as I said, it's a problem everywhere. We've got a couple of examples of what we were able to do with just a quick Google search, and then we're going to zero in because it's really not about what's going on across the country, it's more about what's happening here in Peoria. And I'm going to let the chief go forward with that. So, thanks, Chief.
Thank you, sir. I wanted to say that the Police Department's deployment of officers and resources on the Fourth of July, including the Third through the Fifth, typically is our highest amount of resources, it's deployment-wise. So, particularly this Fourth of July, we knew that we were facing an increase in the amount of fireworks that are being used across the country, so we anticipated that would be the case here. So, about seventy-six percent of all officers that worked for the Police Department were working that night. The only ones that would be excluded were ones that were on scheduled leave time, that had a financial obligation, or officers that were injured, or brand-new officers that just returned from the academy that do not count as individuals or officers on their own. They are not trained yet to perform on their own. Other than that, all officers were working or assigned either to the riverfront, to districts, to the parade routes and what have you. So, everybody was out there we had available. So, we did start off, we have about seven slides, take just a couple of minutes to walk through this, and what you see in front of you is just some of the headlines that we saw when we first Googled this too. It's across the country is what we're looking at, but if you look, Washington Heights, four hundred and five complaints, Santa Maria, California, it's kind of the same thing. That's been the steady theme that we've seen this year. But when we get into the, what we see locally, what I did was, last week, I reached out to the top ten departments, size-wise, that we compared to relatively pretty well. And some of the responses I got back, I wanted to highlight a few of them. Speaking with the chief and Joliet, they had received four hundred eighty-six complaints in that same period of time that we measured too as well, so it's the July third through the fifth. One thing they did differently this year was they raised their fines from one hundred fifty dollars to five hundred with the thought that that would be a deterrent. They did not see that come to fruition. It was more of, they still had an increase in firework use this year compared to last year, so it has not been a measurable impact for them. Springfield, Decatur, Normal, and Rockford, similarly situated as we are, they all reported back kind of the same thing we saw. We saw an increase in the number of complaints this year as compared to last year, and considerably higher than what we saw two years ago. So, how we looked July third through the fifth, we received a hundred and thirty-three, excuse me, a hundred and eighty-three calls for service related to fireworks. The vast majority of those would be complaint-driven. So, when somebody heard the booms and the bangs, they would call in, and those were also dispatch calls. So, officers responded to a hundred and eighty-three calls for service. At the same time, we wanted to utilize a tool that we have already in service, and that is the ShotSpotter system, which detects, obviously, audible gunshots, but it can also detect fireworks, so they can delineate between the two. So, it recorded two hundred and seventy instances of fireworks, and that's by triangulating through sensors. Twenty-three of those complaints, we found to be also related to the ShotSpot alert, so we can pinpoint those twenty-three locations. Eight tickets were issued this year, and those would be ordinance violations. Each one of those tickets are two hundred and fifty dollars. Five of them were issued on the Fourth and three after the Fourth. This map, which is a little bit hard to see here, is just pinpointing the locations of the complaints. The densely populated red spots on the right side would represent particularly their east bluff, but it also captures some of our near north valley there, and obviously, in the bottom left-hand corner, you see the southern corridor. But we also want to point out that we had complaints as far north as Peoria as we could possibly see on our map, but that's one thing that we did not have out there north of McLeer, we did not have ShotSpotter, so we weren't able to pinpoint the exact locations of where the sound came from. But just kind of indicative of, that's just indicative that it was fairly widespread across the city, however, we did have a higher concentration on the east bluff.
I also think it's important to point out here too is that there's also a higher population density, and you have more people in the east bluff and the south side that are living near one another, the houses. As you get further north in the city, there's more space in between them. So, there's more likelihood that you're going to get complaints coming in because you have more people that are living close to one another. So, I think that's important to point out as well. There may be more fireworks that are going off on the north end of town that we just didn't know about because people weren't complaining about.
Okay, so what we looked at prior to the Fourth this year was that we wanted to make sure that we had some public service announcements out this year, so we issued those earlier on with the idea that people would get that education message and refrain from the use of fireworks. That did not happen. We issued eight citations I had mentioned earlier. We also had an action, after-action review of all the complaints, and what we are going to do with every complaint that was lodged, particularly in the east bluff with a higher concentration, was, is that we will have an officer make contact with every address that the violation occurred. Now, we understand that many times, the firework was lit at one location, and it landed two doors down to where the complainant called in and said, "I heard it come from across the street." We're going to keep that in mind as we make that contact with the residents. The idea is not to cause friction within the neighborhood, it is to draw awareness to what we're dealing with every year. So, next year, the idea would be that we would be out in front of it a little bit. So, for any of those folks that are repeat offenders, the message will be clear that next year, if we have any violations, we're going to try to address it head-on and issue the citation as early as possible. So, next year, kind of mentioned that, the public announcement saturation will continue. One thing that we will use differently than this year is that we will use the electronic sign message boards that we use effectively for our curfew violations. We will deploy those in the east bluff and also probably in our center bluff, and then our south corridor as well to try to, just to hammer that message across to the parents to ask for some more parental responsibility. The second thing we're going to do is, we're going to dedicate twenty officers. Originally, we thought we might be able to do this with ten, but I think twenty is going to be a more appropriate number. It is going to be a drain on resources in other areas, but I think it's manageable at this point that we'll be able to speak to this differently. So, I think what we're going to see is that we will have officers either deployed in pairs or individually, depending on what part of the city we're going to be in, to deliver that message. And specifically, the only thing, though, we're going to be responding to is the fireworks. So, we'll have our additional resources, district officers, working, responding to the traditional calls for service, but we will have them dedicated just to stay atop of the fireworks. We will also follow this up with, as part of our after-action review, with the Neighborhood Association District Council folks, and we will try to follow up with those that we issue citations to, to see what the status is of those citations as well. That was the PowerPoint, and it's left the screen anyway.
Questions or comments towards the chief, Councilman Grab?
Thank you, Chief Mitchell, and Chief Snow, and Captain Scally. I think that this is a thoughtful, coherent plan. I wish we had it in place this year, but we're going to move forward, and I thank you for your work, and Manager, I thank you for your work on this.
Thank you, Councilman. I had Councilmember Euler and then Reagan back.
Thank you, sir. And thank you, Chief Mitchell, for giving us the presentation. One thing that stood out to me, though, with three-quarters of... that stood out to me, though, with three-quarters of our force out on the street, it seemed like eight was a pretty low number of citations. Can you talk a little bit about that, maybe what holds that process up, or why there weren't more on the board?
Absolutely. It's absolutely. The challenge is, the challenge on the citations is actually either we have to be certain that it was, the party responsible can be held accountable. So we actually have to catch them either in possession, or sometimes show ownership that they were responsible for the firework. The vast majority of the calls for service that we get is that, "I heard the fireworks going off." The officer responds, and he gets there, he can smell it, and he might possibly even see it. But by the time he gets to where he needs to be, now we have three kids standing outside, and there's an empty bottle, and the bottle rockets are all gone. So we have to be able to demonstrate ownership to at least a certain degree that we're comfortable with in issuing the citation. And I gave the example this earlier. On the 5th of July, I go outside and I clean up my yard from the bottle rockets and things that were deployed in my neighborhood, based upon just finding that in my yard, would that demonstrate ownership that I was the one responsible for it, when in fact, I was on the riverfront the whole night. So it is not just simply responding, and that person said, "I saw it come from that yard." We still have to be able to demonstrate there was some type of possession. Now, so the eight citations that were issued were ones where the officer was right there, they either witnessed it, or they found somebody to be in possession of it. So that's the challenge. And that's the challenge that all the cities that I mentioned earlier are facing, is that, and it's no different than what we would do for possession of alcohol or littering. We actually either have to see it, or have a complainant willing to sign it against this particular individual here.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Regenbach?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, thank you for coming tonight and just outlining what's happened. I think we all understand there's a lot of innocent fun that takes place, but I think this year's, many of us really were rudely awakened by some of the videos we saw on some of the social media, and the intensity was just absolutely unbelievable. Couple follow-up questions. I was, Councilman Euler hit the first one about the number of tickets that were issued, but how are those fines collected? Because I've heard, antidote-ally, that there is no follow-up mechanism on that. So is there some way that those can become more enforceable, or is that just bad information that's out on the street?
Well, up to this point, I've had no follow-up involved with those eight citations. That will be something that we're going to look into, to see who, if anyone, pays the citation, because if it's not being paid, how effective is it? And that's going to be the measuring stick, too. And one of the measuring sticks we're going to try to use is to follow up on these citations.
And I would think with only eight tickets being issued, it'll be pretty easy to follow up, to see how many of those are actually paid. But I think, I don't want this to go unheard, that we're committing a task force next year of 20 officers to be zeroed in on firework issues, because that's something that we all know, that you can get a call for a fireworks-related issue, but then something else happens. So it would appear that the officer is ignoring the original complaint, but maybe there's a burglary or something that he needs to get to. So by having this 20 officer team, I think that's the important thing right now, and we still have time to work through this with the neighborhoods and your command staff, obviously, but I really think that's a great show that we've heard what's happened, and that we're not going to let that repeat itself. So, you know, as this evolves in the next months, you know, I'm sure we'll hear from our neighborhood folks, but I just wanted to reemphasize the fact that you're talking about dedicating 20 officers specifically to fireworks issues, and I would say probably two-thirds will be in the east bluff, but we'll talk about that later. So, thank you for the presentation, and I will be curious for some follow-up, whether from Corporation Council or the Treasurer's Office, about how those citations are paid.
Councilmember Ruckel.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, thank you. Earlier this week, you met with Councilmember Regenbach and myself and the mayor, and thank you very much on that proactive conversation about the subject tonight. Two things that really came out of that conversation as well, and I think that we want to make sure the public knows, too, is one of the things you hit on tonight a little bit, too, was addresses. Whenever we do get calls in, if we can get a definitive address on this or any other situation that comes up, it definitely helps the police be able to sort of, kind of narrow down where that is. So I think, you know, we're still only a couple of days after July 4th, so we may still have some other fireworks out there. So if those happen, the more that we can get a clear address on there, obviously help out, and I think can partner the neighborhoods with the police. And the second piece is, these aren't the bottle rockets that we grew up with as kids. These aren't the little firecrackers that we, and I just want the public to realize that what we're talking about here is really an escalated version of fireworks of what we may remember growing up. These are things that put a flame quite a bit farther, have an explosion rate, or a sort of radius that's larger than what we remember, and especially whenever we get into neighborhoods where houses are fairly tight together, can create a lot of damage. So I just want the public to be aware that we're not talking about the typical bottle rocket here. But again, thank you for your time, and that was last week, actually. I thought it was earlier this week, it was last week. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Further discussion or additional new business to come before the council? New business? Seeing none, Madam Clerk?
We're at Citizens.
We do have one. Councilman's here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sorry about the delay here. Just wanted to talk to our RSE manager, and also Mr. Black. Last night, I had a couple meetings with three large neighborhoods in my district, and again, I had one of your employees with me, Leah Allison, which is a senior city planner, and I just want to make sure you guys know how grateful I am in that she was with me on her personal time. She was with me for a couple hours, from 6:00 to 8:00. It was a fantastic meeting, and she's extremely knowledgeable, and it's a pleasure to have her with me, and I'm really proud to have been working with her last night. So congratulations, and she's a great fine.
Thank you. Last call for any new business. Madam Clerk?
We're at Citizens. Opportunity to address the city council.
Okay, we're at Citizens to address. It's, we just need your name and address for the record, please, and we ask that you keep your comments to five minutes or less. First up is Willow Lucas.
Hello, this is 11 East Frye, Peoria, Illinois. First, let me say, before I make any other comments, is I still have the blue ribbons tied around my pillars on my front porch and on the tree in my front yard, in my show of support for the police department. Many of you saw a video mainly because I sent it. I wanted you to see firsthand what it was, a portion of what we experienced in the east bluff, and I'm sure in some other parts of the city. I cannot tell you how delighted I am with Chief Mitchell's stance of getting firm, of having a dedicated task force or a dedicated patrol to deal with fireworks in the future. It's indicative of the problems in the east bluff. There's been an uptick in violence of other kinds, intimidation by various people. And unless we deal with the issues of quality of life, we can't deal with the big issues. And I have noticed, I am one of the folks that walks around in my yard with my phone in my pocket with Broadcastify playing Prep 1. I listen to the scanner. In fact, I told our councilmen to talk to Tim, and said, "We used to sit out in the yard and listen to the crickets and the birds. Now we sit out in the yard or on our porch and listen for the gunfire with listening to our scanners." The fireworks are a tick of the iceberg, but I have noticed in listening to the scanner that there's been some increased patrols in the east bluff, and I appreciate that. What I didn't appreciate was what we saw in the videos. What I also didn't appreciate was the size of the fireworks that were going off. That 11:15 alarm system went off because the windows were shaking so bad, and as I go down to shut off the alarm system, my cellphone, which I forgot to take downstairs with me, but I got it shut off in time, so at least it didn't call the officers to my door at that time. But we listened to this stuff until well past 2:00 in the morning. People having to get up the next day and go to work, children trying to sleep. It was, to put it bluntly, a nightmare, and I appreciate the thoughts are being put towards what can we do different. I was going to say something about having a targeted task force. I copied the article off of our Facebook page from Elgin, who had the targeted task force, the detail that worked strictly fireworks and did not respond to any other call. During that time that they had the officers responding to fireworks, they handed out 125 citations. The fines went from $100 up to $750 if they had been warned or received another citation. So it was stepped up for the repeat offenders. One thing that they did, and I mentioned it to council earlier, was, you know how we get the robo-calls when a child goes missing? They sent out, they did a robo-call on fireworks and the enhanced enforcement of fireworks to 60,000 people or households in Elgin. That might be something that we could consider for another year as part of our community education, PR, whatever. I would also hope that we don't have another year advertising how you can get fireworks right across the state line in Indiana, that we not allow that type of billboard to go up anyplace in the city of Peoria, going in town or out of town. People know it's there, we certainly don't have to advertise their business. I think that's disgraceful. And with that, thank you, Chief Mitchell, for your efforts and for your planning, and you still got my support.
Thank you. Molly Cruzen Bishop?
Hello. My name is Molly Cruzen Bishop. I live at 6701 North Greenmont in Peoria. I am the hall manager of the Grand Army, sorry, let me go back to the break, Green Hut Memorial Grand Army of the Republic Hall at 416 Hamilton, and I am the event planner for the Second Annual Whiskey Baron Run on Saturday, August 12th. August in Peoria sounds like an absolutely just fun and amazing, all kinds of family events. Starting with the Fun Run, I'm thankful to, hold on, I'm going to start with the Fun Run, and then go into the Taste of Peoria, which is another wonderful event, just a few days before my event. My event is a fundraiser for Central Illinois Landmarks Foundation, and all the proceeds go to the upkeep of the GAR Hall and to the nonprofit Central Illinois Landmarks Foundation. And it's a 5K run and a 1K walk, and we added a Peoria Icon Living Museum this year. I'm a local historian and writer, and I have a theater background, lots of dance and voice and piano, so I'm bringing that to the table. I'm going to be bringing Mayor Woodruff to life. I have six African-American heroes from Peoria coming to life, including Dr. Romeo Garrett, and I have Betty Friedan, Linda Bollinger. There's something, a little bit for everybody. Paul Gordon is going to be portraying Robert Engle Hall, and I'm going to be Molly of Fibber McGee and Molly. I have a fibber, too. And I have, let me see, I don't want to miss, I have Richard Pryor, family-friendly version of Richard Pryor, Kevin Rose from the east bluff. And I just really want to ask City Hall to support the Whiskey Baron Run for Central Illinois Landmarks Foundation, and there's going to be, it's just going to be a good time for everybody. And then you can go over to the Ignite, which I'm so excited about, the Ignite at the Civic Center, which is a free family event, and I'm very excited about that. Anyways, you can find information, how to register, on our Facebook pages, Second Annual Whiskey Baron Run 2017, Green Hut Memorial, GAR Hall Facebook page, or Central Illinois Landmarks Facebook page. And I'm also throwing down a challenge to City Hall, to the PFD, and to PPD, on how many runners and walkers I can gather from each of the three groups. I'm going to have some special prizes that day, and you will also be able to see Councilman Zach Euler portraying Douglas, and I also have an Abe Lincoln and a Mary Todd Lincoln, and he's a sponsor for the race, and it's just going to be a family-friendly, good time, supporting historic preservation in Peoria, and I think it ties into the City Hall receiving the most beautiful architecture in the country. That's quite an honor. And I also, I think that's it. Anyways, thank you very much.
Molly, thank you. Emile Samney?
Good evening, councilmen and women, and Mr. Mayor. I'm Emile Samney, 3922 North Columbus. Well, you know, I kind of feel like I have a huge burden on my shoulders as I have knocked on thousands of doors, you know, during my campaign trailer, trail, and I canvassed for months, and I knocked on many, many places, met with thousands of people throughout, you know, the whole campaign, and I've gathered a lot of complaints, a lot of good feedback, a lot of recommendations and suggestions for our city. So I wanted to point out a few things. You know, the issue which I've brought, you know, before, and maybe caused a lot of backfire from the paper, the issue of consolidation between the city and the county when it comes to a lot of services, and not just police in particular, but also many other services. And a great example would be the election commission. You know, as we used to have a city election commission and a county election commission, and now we are, they've been combined, they've been consolidated, and we only have to pay one entity instead of two. And, you know, when I met with Sheriff Department, you know, leadership at the time, Mike McCoy, I had almost like a two, three-hour meeting with him, and we talked about various issues, and I met also with the county board, and, you know, my research and based on a lot of the numbers, that I found out we can be saving potentially millions of dollars if we were able, if we are able to do that. And again, you know, I've been speaking at, you know, the city council and almost at every, I don't know, every meeting I attend, I've come up with, you know, certain suggestions, and I've talked about a lot of the ideas that we can make to kind of bring more revenue to the city, and to start like thinking outside of the box. You know, in my research, Illinois has the largest, again, when it comes to the country, and I'm comparing states here, we have the highest number when it comes to like layers of government. I mean, there's just all kind of layers of government, from state, from city, from county, from township, it's just, it's crazy, really. There's so many things that can be combined, consolidated at the same time. You know, if we're able to do that, I know it's not easy, because nobody wants to give up their power, but honestly, at the end of the the end of the day, I find it very doable. I find it to be, you know, it could be easily done if we can just come together as City Council and County Board and discuss these issues, you know, openly and come up with, you know, we can just, you know, I'm not saying it can go one way or another, but, you know, I think Mayor Ordis spoke about this about eight years ago. I think when I did my research, I think he brought this with Sheriff County, the town, the Sheriff Department, and the police chief. And I'm not sure what happened to that effort, but I would love to hear more about that. So I just wanted to remind you, again, as we struggle and as our states struggle with revenue, it can really save us at least, at least from, based on my numbers, two to three million dollars minimum, minimum, if we consolidate just a couple of departments, just a couple of departments. But again, be more than happy to meet with you for more details if you'd like. Thank you.
Next is Ryan Kaufman?
Good evening, Mayor, council members, and Peorians. My name is Ryan Kaufman of 5401 North Big Hollow Road. A property previously up for annexation, which is still on the table and possible, or possibility of being brought up in front of the council with lawyers.
Ryan, excuse me for a second. I stopped the clock, so you're not losing any time. Can you just speak a little bit closer into the mic? You have a lighter voice. I just want to make sure everybody can hear you. Thank you.
A property previously up for annexation, which there still is a possibility of being brought up in front of the council with lawyers, if not, if this property isn't soon bought by me. I come to you this evening to bring attention to my life, my dream, my passion, my home, Nomadic Roots Urban Farmstead. Nestled in the corner of the city, next to Best Buy, is a hidden woodland oasis, full of alpacas, bees, chickens, ducks, peacocks, organic and naturally grown foods, and so much more. As important as it is for me to save my farm, let me explain why I feel the city and the county of Peoria should be concerned these properties fall into my hands. Nomadic Roots Overgrowth is my second child, well, fourth if you count my dogs. This not-for-profit is more than just another urban garden popping up on a vacant lot. Nomadic Roots Overgrowth is the re-education of sustainability and old ways. The people of most urban areas have become so distant from their food, looking for dinner in a plastic bag instead of outside in the dirt or canned by Grandma and Grandpa. My goal is to bring the food back to the people by bringing the education and materials to the food deserts and other areas, by teaming up with Molly Rice of Peoria's North End Urban Garden, Brandon Kason of Feed a Child, Abernathy's Honey, Partners with Nature, Eagle Ridge Native Drum, the Wasubi Group, or Lakota Garden Group, and so many more to come. We plan to bring gardens to as many people in the city who want to start one. Most of the target areas near the Taft Homes and Harrison Schools will need raised beds due to the high levels of heavy metals, such as lead and arsenic. I have reached out to the EPA and the University of Illinois to hopefully start a pyro, a pyro mediation project and study, excuse me, which would remove heavy metals and toxins from the soils using plants and off-site burning of the organic materials, so that the residents could again use their soil to garden. If the re-education is done correctly, we could bring a new industry to the city I have only begun to touch on. One long-term goal of this project would be to bring jobs to this area, or these areas, rezoning to bring agriculture back to the city economy. If rezonings are done, that could create a buy the black campaign to bring urban farmers into the area. I, with the help of others, pursuing, are pursuing the purchase of many city, county, and private lots close to the Taft Homes and Harrison Schools to grow an urban garden center, to allow space for workshops, hands-on experience, and materials to take home to create their own urban garden. A key to success of Nomadic Roots Overgrowth is making sure I save and expand my urban farmstead on Big Hollow Road. If I have to move myself, the animals, and the gardens, it might not be as easy to get to the inner-city locations or give as much of my time due to moving or distance. I have started a GoFundMe for Nomadic Roots Urban Farmstead. I'm running on the campaign. If I collect $1 from everyone in the city who eats, I can raise enough money. Even if only one-third of the area gave a dollar, that would still be enough to cover the $80,000 down payment for the properties. I truly believe in this, and so does the Joann Manor Neighborhood, appropriate for the Neighborhood Appreciation Week. We are quite a force when asked to be, which can be, which I'm sure Mr. Matulongo knows from the meetings. So I'm asking you, the city of Peoria, the people of Peoria, for your dollar, so that we can be an example to other cities around the nation about what $1 in a community can truly do. Thank you for your time, and I can be reached at ryan@nomadicroots.org. I look forward to building a relationship and hopefully getting everyone's attention before I'm pushed out. Again, thank you and have a good night.
Thank you. Next is Anthony Wallraven?
Hello, my name's Anthony Wallraven. I live at 1927 West Hudson, Peoria. I wasn't going to say anything, but I found that whole thing about the lawn mowing fascinating because I had an abate sign once, and I was out of town, and they mowed my lawn, and I paid it. And it kind of sounds like I was kind of a sucker to pay it because there's really nothing you guys, there's nothing that would have happened to me. I mean, a lien would have been put on my house that I don't intend to sell, so that wouldn't have really been an issue. I'm really glad that they do it more, and I definitely noticed that there are more people going around mowing lawns. And I'm glad that you guys spent more money to do it. I think it's kind of weird that you would ask for more money like three days before you needed it. Like when I was a kid and I did that, my parents would usually yell at me. But I think it's kind of like, it seems like the only people that don't pay these fines and fees are the stupid, the poor, and slum lords. Let's just call them what they are. And so stupid people and people that don't have a lot of money, you can understand why they don't pay. But then you just have people that know that the city is going to run their lawn care service for them. And I don't have an answer to that because I know that the state doesn't let the city take properties for lack of paying like fines and stuff like that. But it doesn't seem right that, I've lived in places where the landlords didn't mow the grass, and the city would come out and mow it, and they'd put the abate signs up, and then they'd mow it, and it never seemed like the landlord ever paid the city to do it. And I don't like the idea that I'm subsidizing someone's property that doesn't, most of these, a lot of these properties are not abandoned. I mean, there are some properties in Peoria that are abandoned that were mowed, but a lot of them are owned by people. And they know that all you can do is put a lien on their house, that they're not going to sell, they're just going to rent it to someone else. They're never going to sell it. So I would love to hear you guys focus on a way to maybe bring, again, it looks like there's three types of people. There's people that are like on vacation and don't pay, and that's understandable. There are people that can't afford to, and there are people that kind of know that this is a game system. And I don't think, if there's anyone in Peoria that's lived in a property that's owned by a landlord that didn't really care how the property was kept up, I'm lucky enough not to do that anymore. I own my house, but I have lived in properties like that, and they exist, and they're far more prevalent in this city than sometimes I think we care to admit. And I think that this is like, this is a perfect example of how this system is abused, and it's abused by the people that know the system, and they know there's nothing that we can do about it, except for, as the city manager said, put a lien on their property. They're not selling these properties. They don't own these properties because they're trying to flip them. They own these properties because they know they're worth $700 a month until the sky falls in. So I would maybe hope that you guys would figure out a way to punish the people that are taking advantage of the system, recognize that most of those people are not impoverished people, and they're not, you know, just kind of burnouts. They're people that know exactly what they're doing, which is that they have a city subsidized lawn care service. Thank you very much.
Mr. Sierra?
You know, I'm disappointed to a lot of you fathers of the Peoria, you know, you city council people. I've got to tell you that I'm the god, grandfather of this city. But you don't listen to what people say, you know. I can come here and listen to you orators for all this time, and I only get five minutes to talk. But this situation we had over the Fourth of July, I don't, I don't claim that as being very American, you know what I mean? What's your spirit when you shoot up all this gunpowder? Can say I compliment West Peoria. They showed the spirit of the Fourth of July with the parade, and the people were out there, come out and participated in that, you know. What this council and city has to do is they have to make some rules that are really harsh and that they can back up. And the fines that they give for these, what do you call it, these offenses, they should, they should raise them. You know, we've talked about, oh, last year and the year before, and what you're going to do next year. You better do a lot better than you have in the past. You know, I come and listen to a lot of this bull that we hear all, you know, and you people better get with it and use your common sense better. I hate to tell you, but it's, I'm like an old grouchy grandpa, actually scolding you people because you let this happen. You let, you let that billboard get put up at the top of the Western Avenue Hill, you know. You're just helping the people that are looking for the fireworks where to go. A few years back, a lot of them used to go to Missouri and bring the fireworks up. And where do they, a lot of them work out of, like the drug dealers, out of their trunks and that, you know. That's where, you know, they store them. And you've got to look into that, too, of making rules where you, if you see a suspicious automobile, you should be able to stop that and inspect it, see if there's fireworks in that, in that vehicle. See, I'm running out of town, but time, but I'm going to have some pictures pretty soon, and I'm going to show you what some people do, you know. They think, they must think that that's the American spirit, but it isn't. That money that they spend on fireworks, we've got a lot of people that we could feed, you know, with that money. And I could sit here and scold you more and more, but you don't listen a lot of times. So I think we, I'd like to get together with some of you people, and we can drum up something. I know some people have saw what they've done to my automobile. They shot fireworks off of my car and the street.
Mr. Sierra, the timer just went off.
That's what I mean. You can't stop it in five minutes.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
We have an executive session?
Mr. Corporation Counsel?
Yes, Governor, we would have a executive session under Section 2C 11 for pending litigation.
Okay, we have a motion to go into executive session. Councilmember Euler, seconded by Councilmember Seer. Seeing no discussion, please cast your ballots. That motion passes unanimously, and we have a motion to adjourn. Councilmember Ruckregel, seconded by Councilmember Turner. There's no discussion, please cast your ballots. That motion passes unanimously. We'd like to thank H. Wayne Wilson and his listening audience at WCBU, as well as Cable Channel 22, and this meeting is adjourned.